The RONB Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, entitled it with the Public Meetings Act. The time being, location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect, as well as posting notices in the barrel hall, RONB post office, Mary Boldt School, Line Bingham School, Ray Downing School, and the RONB Public School District website. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members?
Mr. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Beebe.
Here.
Mr. Rockin.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Lego.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sams.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
We have a horn.
Also present, Maia Iannucci, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Supervisor of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Shae Gezi, Principal of Bingham Accounting School, Mr. Phil Silva, Vice Principal, Mary Boldt School, Ms. Lattice Hubbard, Child Study Team Supervisor, and Mr. Frank Hei, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 19, 2019.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Naomi. Does anyone have any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Mr. Rockin.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Hi.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Iannucci to start with our first presentation. Our first presentation is not according to the agenda of the budget presentation because that's when everybody's sleeping, the second doctor Karen starts. So, we would like to recognize some of our colleagues who have been recognized by their peers and by their colleagues. It's a recognition that we've done now. This is our second year, officially recognizing staff members of the year. So, I'm gonna call over in a second. We send out this information, I guess, early winter for nominations for Support Staff and Teacher of the Year. Of course, we did it on Google Books or Little School. They submit those things back to the board office. We tally names and everything else. Then we kind of have a committee that is voting on those staff members of the year. And then they tell me who those three people are. And then I get to show up at their doorstep, knock on their door, and then embarrass them in front of not only their students, but their peers as well. Not just joking. All three people that we recognize this year, it was amazing how humble they were when we walked into the room. Ms. Gezi, Mr. Stone, myself, got into the cameras there as well, because they didn't think they were worthy of it for some reason. But if you speak to any of their colleagues on any day throughout the school year, they say this is all overdue. So, I just want to give you a last little applause. Thank you very much. Staff members like you who make this such a wonderful community. So, I'm gonna call you up in a second. I'd like to take a picture. We're gonna post that on the website. Hopefully, better than that. You probably wear the same pants, but a different tie. I think the horse is red, that shirt. So, no, I think I'm good. I'll give you the box to take this home to, so in case you all just put someplace in the car, it's more unpackable. But first off, I'd like to recognize Melissa Preston. She was nominated by, I believe, can you pull that up? A lot of people.
Author, we had a lot of nominations for author.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it wasn't just one person.
Exactly. Thank you. So, Mrs. Preston works in our ND group. She works not only, she's a one-on-one, apparently, but she also works with several students in the classroom. She does a great job. Mrs. Preston, whenever you need her to do something else, she's always willing to chip in and help out. She's a member of the community, so it's always good to have that as well. So, we'd just like to recognize her as a 2018-19 Support Person of the Year. Thank you very much. There you go.
You get attached to your lap.
And there's something in the box. There's a little pin. There's a pin in there, so I think. This next person, I think, I believe you saw her name on the list with regrets, because this is her final year in the RONB schools. We wanted to give her the award, you know, before this, but today I was about to do it. Something happened. Long story short, we're doing it now. Mrs. Fans, one of the first people I met with when I became Superintendent, and we kind of assigned her a new role. She was in the classroom for years, and one of the things we kind of changed her over. Now she is a, one of our RTI people. She does a great job working with not only students, but the staff. She is like the go-to resource at Bingham School. There's not a teacher over there that wouldn't tell you, "No, I have a great relationship with Mrs. Fans." They go to her for everything. She's gonna be missed greatly, but we're so happy for her to start the next chapter of her life and her career. And I love when I talk to her, when she told me she was retiring, she told me, I said, "What's your plan?" She goes, "I don't have a plan right now." That's the best plan to have, is to have no plan. But I'm sure in the next six, eight months, she'll be doing something, but right now she's not, you know, doesn't have a plan. I think that's great. She was also obviously nominated by a lot of her peers, not only peers and colleagues at Bingham School, but at Downing School, some at Boldt School. They do, you know, see all she does for students. It's unbelievable what she does. Parents send emails. Sometimes we only get the emails or phone calls, the bad ones. I've gotten laundry lists of emails that are, you could scroll down your email. It's the great things Mrs. Fans does, working with students. I'm lucky to tell some of those parents that she could go longer to do this. She's done a great job.
I'm gonna miss it.
Mrs. Fans. And her family is here.
Because when they gave it to me that day, I said, "Well, they don't really think I'm that special, right?"
My family. How do I find that hard to believe?
They might have picked one, yeah.
You can walk around your house without a word.
And last but not least, is our Volt 2018-19 Teacher of the Year. This young lady, I always have a connection like she started back here in 2002, because she lives in the community that I grew up in. So, she shares stories with me about some of the teachers her kids had growing up in the wooly schools. And I'm like, "That person's still there? They need to maybe retire." But they didn't. But another phenomenal resource to our school district. She was originally, when I got here, I believe you were teaching just reading. Now, you're teaching just language, or language arts?
Probably special ed, that's it.
Yeah. Is that all it does? My head wasn't this bright. But she was in sixth grade. Then we moved her to eighth grade. She was lucky to come to eighth grade when I was still the principal of the building. I said, "Well, you're the best person for the job. You're gonna do the great things." I think she loved it. Apparently, she's also working in our kind of RTI system as a resource for not only our students, but for our staff as well. They were, I think some of your colleagues are just as excited for you that you got this award, so they're very excited. Mrs. Seroli is an asset to this district. I won't say how many years she's been here.
That is.
But she's been here a long time, so they're excited that she's receiving this award tonight. And she was also here. And we did not make these with a 3D printer. If any of the staff want to say anything, RONB Awards, you're very welcome to. If any of their families want to say something, family.
I just think, I have to say, as I put in my note to Mr. Iannucci and the Board of Education, it's been an honor to work here, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support that I've gotten these 34 years. I walked in here, like I said, as a student teacher in Bingham School and was hired then, and have been here ever since. And I never, I never looked back. I never regretted it. Your new administration, six years ago, when our new administration was formed, have really, things have changed, and it's just so strong academically. I have parents that are coming in now to register children for kindergarten, and I can tell them honestly that they're going to be very happy here, like so many good things are going on, and it's constantly changing, and we're constantly updating it. And everyone has their, the staff you have as well, their interest, their child's interest is what they care about the most, having them experience success and finding whatever way that they can for that child to reach that point. I mean, it's fabulous. This is a very bittersweet moment for me. I can handle myself now, but when June comes, I will be a mess. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you gonna tell them that they didn't want to go home? I know that. I went about six, no, six seconds longer than I normally do. You're more than welcome to, you know, feel free. Yeah, we won't be offended at all. We know you thought all that. Thank you. Thank you.
It's good to see you. I'm sorry it's so late.
All right, Dr. McCarron.
Okay, so before we go into the budget hearing, we do have to open up public comment on any agenda items, including the 1920 budget. So, if anyone has comments regarding the budget, now would be the time to ask them. Seeing none. Unfortunately, the presentation's gonna be very similar to what it was at the last Board of Education meeting. As you know, at the last Board of Education meeting, you approved the 1920 budget to be submitted to the County Office of Education. What happens then is they review the budget. They tell me if anything's wrong. And then I re-present the budget in the public hearing to, for you to finally approve, for us to put into place for the next school year. The only thing that, there were changes that had to be made within the budget was regarding our preschool grant. As I had stated previously, the preschool grant is solely for general education population for the grant funding. The special education portion of it that we pay is that of our general budget as it always has been. So, what I had to do was I had to move that money from my general budget into the grant portion, and I had to show that within the numbers, and that was the main change that had to be made within the budget. So, that's the only modification that was made, and you'll see, I think it's 276,000 that was transferred to the grant to show that we were paying for the special education portion of, and that could be for instructional aids, OTPT, speech, any related services that any of our special ed population preschoolers might need over the course of their time in school. Budget development and timeline, in October, as soon as the school year begins, we start thinking about the budget for the following year. It's kind of hard for people to do. However, you know, I already have my folder made up for my 2021 budget. So, we talked with our building principals, our department chairs, Lattice Frank, so that way we can figure out what the needs are coming up, and we can make sure that we're properly identifying how we're going to fulfill them. In January, budgets are submitted from the principals and department chairs to myself and Mr. Iannucci to review. We like to call them what the need, we call them needs and wish lists. So, we want to know, like, what are people wishing for, that they would love to have in their classroom, because sometimes we're able to provide that, or what do they actually need in order to run their rooms effectively? In February is when the budget software starts opening up, and I'm truly waiting for the budget address from the governor, because that's when I actually know what our state numbers are gonna be. The budget's created, it gets approved the first time by the board in March and submitted to the County Office of Education. The county superintendent of schools reviews it and approves it, the county educational specialist, and the county business administrator. And then once they all approve it, I'm able to do my final budget hearing, which has to be done within a week and a half time span across the county, which is why our meeting for April was pushed back to April 30th, because it falls directly within the time allowed. And then tonight is a public hearing. Considerations are always school and district goals, community supportive feedback, our enrollment, anticipated revenues, money coming in, mandated regulations. As things change, we are obligated to implement them. A new law that just passed was that all schools need to have emergency buttons. If you go in all of our main offices, that's something we were already doing this current school year, so there are emergency buttons that are being hooked up in all three of our main offices. So, any mandated regulations that come up, we need to find money within our budget to place those. In prior years, it was the AEDs. I think when I first came in is when we started placing AEDs throughout all parts of our buildings and making sure that we had portable ones that we're able to take with us for sports, and then any upcoming costs or needs that we could foresee. In terms of revenues, half of our budget is supported by local tax levy. The tax levy remained at a 2% increase. As long as the tax levy is at 2%, there's no need to take it to the public for vote because it's the 2% cap. So, you can see over the years, we've increased that by 2%. It's 146,000 additional dollars that we get from taxes with the 2% increase. Our total revenues that we have for the budget for 1920, and that's all of the money we have coming in, is 16,452,856 dollars. It's also important to recognize that those revenues in terms of money coming in include our reserve accounts. So, each year in June, the board approves for us to put money into capital reserves. If we weren't able to put money into capital reserves, we wouldn't be able to do the facility upgrades necessary, because sometimes it can take two to three years to build that reserve account up, so we can then pull it into the budget. And this also includes our increased pre-K funding, so that's close to a million dollars of that number is our pre-K funding that we're getting from the state. It's about 992,000, I want to say, that we're getting from the state. Looking at this, in terms of the tax rate, in 2019, the tax rate was 1.47%. That's an increase of .028 or 2.8 cents. 2.8 cents on a house valued at 147,703 dollars is a $4.40 increase per month that the average person would say. So, what's in this budget? We're maintaining all services and initiatives that we currently have in place. We've increased, we're continuing to increase or update our technology throughout all grade levels of the district. One thing that, like regarding technology, next year at our elementary schools, we're moving more from our technology labs to more STEAM labs, so students are gonna be doing a lot more hands-on, getting rid of the desktops. We're doing the touchscreen Chromebooks, a lot more coding, and engaging things over there. Updates of school facilities. We're always looking at security renovations in terms of cameras, our decks, just replacing doors, handles on doors, closures on doors, all of those pieces. We're creating two classrooms, so my, the business office area will be turning into a preschool classroom, and then also one of the rooms that we use for sensory will be getting repurposed to be a sensory slash preschool classroom as well. HVAC upgrades. We have a few flooring projects. We're still waiting for information to come back regarding the flooring, to find out exactly what flooring we are dealing. So, there's different areas. We've already, and we've been doing this in pieces now for the past three years, so every summer, we're doing flooring projects to get rid of carpet, put down carpet tile or the VCT tile. So, we're still waiting for some information, but there will be flooring projects taking place. And then also masonry work at Bingham and Downing. As the buildings age, we're looking to make sure that we are updating the outsides of the buildings and maintaining the integrity of the buildings, so that way we're keeping any leaks out or any issues to foresee in the future. We're maintaining support advancements to the educational and extracurricular programs within the district. So, food service this year, while we made money, we didn't make as much money as we had in the past. The reason being is, we just created our own kitchen, so there was a lot of startup costs, because we didn't have everything that we needed to start. But we were able to support that without any district funding, and just based solely on food service funding, we're able to keep that going. So, our food service numbers have been stable. Students have been happy with the food quality coming out, and that's continuing. So, hopefully, we'll be making a little bit more profit next year off of food service. Transportation, we've cut costs drastically over the years since we added in our own two buses. By doing the changes in times, we've also been able to use the bus for athletic activities after school, and also sometimes to offset the cost of field trips by using the bus in the middle of the day. So, that, and we've also been using the bus for other schools who might need help or support with trips, athletics, or those pieces, and that's been revenue that we've been bringing in. And then, of course, before and after care and summer programming. In this budget, you'll see that 75,000 dollars was charged to before and after care and brought into this budget. Our summer programming is supported off of the money that we make from before and after care, and that's how we keep our costs so low for the summer programming that we do have. And this is always, I add to this every single year, just 2013 to present in terms of things that have been added since 2013 to the district in the various areas of this year. For personnel, our main focus is adding two pre-K teachers and two additional aides, because we're increasing our classrooms by two. We have our preschool curriculum expansion that's taking place, so that will continue in terms of professional development and growth. We have all the things in place as far as how we're assessing students and the curriculum that's being used, but we need to also further our training for that. And then for maintenance of facilities, we'll be doing our modified classrooms and fixing our, two of our classrooms for our pre-K classrooms. We'll be doing security upgrades, flooring projects, bathroom updates, and of course, we always try to do outdoor learning spaces. So, that's where we are. Does anyone have, does anyone on the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Does anyone have any questions?
At this time, does the public, before the board votes, does the public have any questions regarding? And why this is different is because our county office, when we get new people at the county office, we're sometimes told very specific things as far as how budget hearings have to be held, and people need to see things differently. So, that's why I'm asking if anyone has questions so many times, because we have to ask that question. You have questions for me to answer?
Just my last.
No. You don't agree.
Okay, so, if there's up, yes, we got a question.
I have a question.
Go for it.
You said something about the outdoor areas, like I know last year in the budget, you were thinking about picnic tables or places for the, but I didn't see any of that unless I'm blind.
So, what happens is, so we actually just got a phone call today. Sometimes when things get scheduled, they get scheduled far out. So, this spring, before this year is over, we are having a goal. You will be seeing the outdoor area being put in with the court-in-place playground. You will also be seeing, what we had issues with the contractor, the courtyard between our preschool classrooms. We'll also have an entire learning area put into place. The issue with that is, we don't want them coming in because they are bringing equipment through the school, so we don't want them coming in during the school day. So, right now, we're trying to figure out hours, whether or not they'll start coming in at 3:00, or if they'll be coming in those last two weeks in June. But our school budget runs all the way up until June 30th. So, unfortunately, sometimes based on whether or not they can come in spring break, whether or not the floor, the ground is well enough for them to put the materials and equipment in, is very much up to weather and scheduling and where we fall in line with those pieces.
How about Bingham and Downing?
Bingham and Downing, we are looking at adding in the extra basketball hoops and the, the, the playground and the seats around the playground areas.
Oh, okay, good. Because I know, I see on Facebook a lot of times, teachers take their kids out there and read or do things, and they sit on the grills and the laptop, so.
Extra baseball hoops where?
It's the, Ms. Gezi, what are they? Three-way.
Where you can throw it off, and it's like there's several baskets you can throw.
Like embed it into the ground?
Yeah.
They're not like a true basketball.
It's more like an area where kids.
Shoot, it's like a shooting.
They have a better chance of getting the ball in a big, wide.
You know, I don't really, you watch about it. If it was a wrestling match, I could give you the.
Just another enhancement to offer them or.
Just a different, someone else to them.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
I do have one other thing. Like when you do the areas, are there gonna be like a bin to put stuff that we would normally have to drive through the whole school to get out of?
A lot of times, that stuff will be identified as we need it, so depending on where the grant is. And then here's what I will also say, is oftentimes, because we run our own before and after care program, many times our before and after care program is also using that same equipment. So, if we don't have money slotted in this one area, another area is able to then support that as well. So, that's where we.
Sounds like we don't like.
Need like a little shed. You're all the way down there.
Right. Like since it's gonna be over there, like if we have to take, like right now, the girls are carrying a wagon with a bunch of things.
Yes. We can look into getting, I call them gang boxes.
I don't know what they're called.
It's something like that where you keep equipment in, like, I know, like sports places, football fields out, and bootleg savages. So, yeah, we can always.
At Downing, we used to have one that held some of the new teachers' equipment.
And it keeps weather out.
Weather all fit, and we don't have to drag it through.
Yep. And then also, just so you know, the things that are, so when we present certain things, sometimes we aren't able to do every project that we budget to do. And what then happens is, the money that's slotted for that project, whatever is there within the budget, gets returned to that exact fund. So, if I take it from Capital Reserve and say I want to budget it, that's my goal. If I'm unable to then get what's said is gonna be there, it gets returned to the Capital Reserve account for the next budget. One of the things with a school budget is that you have one time during the school year to really identify all of your needs, have the budget approved, and unless it's a major emergency in some way, shape, or form, you're not moving money out of your reserve accounts. You aren't touching any of those other areas. You're locked in until the following school year. And if you do have to make any of those changes, that's board approvals, county approvals, Department of Education approvals, in order to get those done.
But just because, when we plan to do something, it's not always our fault.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
But like some of the things that we wanted done last summer that weren't done.
Yeah, I was looking forward to that.
Were not our fault, not, not the district, not us.
We used to take the kids out and read outside on a nice day, and we used to sit on that wall, but that wall's horrible, that wall's nice. But anyway, and I was looking forward to that. Like I, you know, I was so excited. Oh, man, we'll have a place with benches, and we can get reading to the kids out there. And it didn't happen all year.
Well, even like for the playground, when people came out to look for the playground, we were hoping to put it in one location. When they looked at that location, they would then tell us that's not ADA compliant, and it's too much of a hill, and you would need 120 feet of ramping in order to even put a playground there. And you would have to do this, this, and that, and you're like, "We just want a place there." And that's not necessarily how, what we're allowed to do, or what would then be approved. So, that's when things change, and all of a sudden, you know, we have to modify our plan and adjust accordingly.
Yeah, I can't believe it, but it was nice that it was there years ago. I remember when I worked with Gingerware, you should go up that hill and play on that playground and have fun.
And now that we're getting.
And a picnic table was there.
And now that we're getting grant funding from the state.
We have to follow.
Close to a million dollars. They're watching every single thing that we are putting in and where things are going. So, it's a big difference.
Thank you for your questions. Anyone else? No? Okay, so then at this time, I need a motion to approve the 2019-20 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-20 budget.
I got Patty. Motion made by Patty.
I'll start.
Seconded by Dennis. I don't believe there's any questions. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bee, uh, Mr. Rockin.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Ms. Sams.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, superintendent's report. I'll just give some key things I sent you to report.
Yes.
Ms. Sims. Ms. Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, superintendent's report.
All right, I'll just, some key things I'd like to report. Obviously, our enrollment, those all the additions preschools that obviously can go up come September, and actually push close to nine hours kids at that point. And we're down to six average replacements, so I always cite that as well. Five? Uh, that changed from before spring break, you're right, five average replacements, I apologize. Down to the high teens and early twenties, sorry, I can't remember those people. No longer called park testing, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment.
Sorry.
I called it park last time, Dr. McCarron called me out the next day. Always happens to die hard. I didn't call the guy with tester, guess. Next Monday, obviously, the middle schools at three starts and the volley three to five starts over at Bingham and Downing as well as back here at Bowles in the back area there. And then the science learning assessment is not until the end of the month, but that's just this one day. They have cut down the amount of minutes, I believe, in all the tests.
The number of tests.
Yeah, so if these kids aren't there, you know, brugging themselves out for a long period of time. A couple, I did notice, noted a policy just regarding vaping. There's been a big push, I know, not so much at the middle school level. We're not having many concerns from the high school level with vaping, students vaping in school. We have that problem here at school, just a little bit. We haven't, I don't believe. Mr. Silva, yes, again, hopefully not, just guessing. My problem, we just want to educate our staff, let them look forward in the signs of, you know, students doing things like that. They can be discreet, put out on the level, we're going to put, you know, vape detecting machines in our bathrooms, but we do ask teachers, we do look out for, you know, what they look like because they can disguise that thing, like a USB drive or, you know, a pen cap, anything. Yeah, so we're reviewing some positive things put in place, not educating not only our staff but our students and the parents as well. So as well, of course, we see the problems, it's just not the negative things they're trying against. Other things, those things disguising. I'll just keep a lookout for that. Obviously, the policy came from the governor's office regarding students on field trips having ID cards that became law earlier in the month. So when students go on field trips, they have to have an ID card now. I believe we hold on to our ID cards at the elementary school, middle school level. So we're not, so it'll be like each kid will have a box. We're not going to give a five-year old lanyard.
Why is Christian?
Exactly, because they have five, that's just more safety, security things, having to prevent something from happening on that bus, we have identification, who's on the bus specifically, so that's why I kind of put that on there. Well, as Dr. McCarron was saying earlier in his presentation, the, his office is becoming one of our preschool classrooms. So the whole board office is kind of the, you know, shuffled around a bit. We will be relocating to Verrill Hall, the second floor. Mr. Mayer, as I have called him, says, we're ready July first. I love his optimism. If we're not ready by July first, we will make accommodations, probably in this building, work out, you know, offices around here until they're ready, but they really made a lot of progress. We have been back since spring break.
I'll be in there.
You'll be in there, Brett? Wifi.
The wifi's free.
For ten to two.
In the winter, you can go by.
For ten to two, they cut the wifi to thirty minutes.
I have connection.
So we'll be moving over there, our staff, all our staff who's being relocated, seen the facility, they're excited about it, they had some input in it. I think it's going to be a good move. I believe we're kind of, we're discussing that. On what that's going to look like. So we're excited. Get you over there sooner than later, once things are complete, I say we'd like to move to that. School calendar is also on approval for tonight. There's no major change to the school calendar. The first day of school for students will be September fifth, which will be a full day. Teachers will go back to September third. And the last day of school, I believe, is coming next year, will be the seventeenth. That's if we don't have any snow. This year, we do not have any snow, so we have to make adjustments to the calendar. Summer programming, we start that the weekend, school's done this year, so that starts up on the twenty-fourth and runs through August fifteenth. And then E S Y, again, the eighth, twelve, yeah. And that's not only for our E S Y for special education, but also for our Title I program as well. That is, letters are going out. So we'll get the feedback and see how we can handle that as well. And then I put, with upcoming activities, hold on. Andy Russell, do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah. What we're negotiating with them, Sean, are you, are you trying to get a multi-year agreement to lock in a fee for a rent?
Yes.
I did, I did make sure that I, 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 when I spoke to all of you individually, I made sure I, I, we, we, a few of us had that concern.
And I've toured the area, it's really nice, very spacious.
It was nicer than you imagined, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I, Mark and I were pleasantly surprised as well.
And I think it's probably the wisest investment compared to other options we were looking at.
For, for sure, for sure.
My only fear is the fire ski.
We're going to have some drills, two a month. Now, two a month. We'll have, they'll have a report.
You step on the stairs.
Mayor asked if he would like to try it out. Um, I actually have an additional comment as well. I think I let Mr. Iugie and Mr. Peely and Mr. Silva know that Black Horse Pike are, we started all wearing IDs for safety concerns now, and it's like an actual, like a policy. And if the students don't wear it, it ends up being like a, like a lunch detention or a discipline because we just wanted to be able to quickly identify, okay, like I see that lanyard, I see, I know, I see, and then scan everything, we all have to do it. And a lot of the nine-three years were having issues, so I reached out to the middle school to say maybe we could institute these back here in the middle school. Maybe not in the, in the Downing, but the middle school. I know there's little machines, a bedroom door, if they don't, we need them right in our L O C. If they lose them, it's a five-dollar fee. If they don't have the five dollar, they make it right there and put a five-dollar fine on their account.
And I have some.
So like, if you ever want to talk to me about, or reach out to our principal, vice principals, I just, we just feel as though, I do know that the other two middle schools, attending middle schools also adopted a similar policy, so then it would be like, our students would be the only ones not used to it when they go. And I don't want to, I always try to look for any way to not have a student have any type of discipline or, you know, having, sometimes our students, you know, block the system, you know, when they get to high school and try and like, you know, rebel a little bit. And if they're used to wearing their ID in the middle school, they wear them in college. We're trying to say the police officers wear them, nurses wear them, doctors wear them. We're just trying to make sure that for safety concerns. So I'm hoping that we can, if not by the end of the school year, next year, institute that. Maybe have to make some changes over the summer to our policies and to our expectations. And you guys are the officers, but fourth graders can wear them, so.
Just to add to your comment, I would love to see them in my next school year.
Absolutely.
I, I did it in my school district when I was working, twenty-five years doesn't take that long to put together the IDs.
And they just have to be all invisible. So if you can wear your own lanyard, you can wear a Triton lanyard, you can wear a Nike lanyard, you can, believe it or not, a lot of kids clip it on and go, here it is, they've got a little pulley thing. Because like, we look for it now, you know, so it's just something that, I just like to have them to all have an even playing field when they arrive to high school. And right now, we're currently the only ones not doing it, so I'd like to see that be done, please. Please talk about that. Any other questions? All right, Dr. McCarron.
Um, right now, we're in full testing mode and then some evaluations for staff members for the end of the school year. In terms of the business office, we are heading the year out, making sure that all of our grants are ready to be closed out come June thirtieth. Also, making sure that all contracts and things like that are in place for next year. So we're trying to get all those. The May agenda has already been started because that's a long one in terms of all contract approvals for both staff and also for all contracts that we use with companies over the course of the next school year. So we've already started receiving those, making sure that everything's correct, that any changes that need to be made or modified are being done. And that's kind of where we are right now.
That's all you have for us? I'm sorry, I meant to ask a question. I'm not used to you being so brief. Any questions for Dr. McCarron or any other reports that are attached? No? Okay. P T A report, I let you guys know that our annual basket auction is Friday, May tenth, and the Board of Education usually all chips in to buy a big ticket item. So if you can, please get that to me. If you didn't bring anything today, I asked them to get it to you, Mrs. Wilson, if they could stop in here by Friday, if you don't mind, if they forgot today, just so we can figure out what we're going to do. And just like, you know, I mentioned to some of the newer board members, we use that money to pay for field trips for our students, so it's one of our biggest fundraisers. So I appreciate that, thank you. Committee reports. Personnel, I can start by saying personnel, that's today, they're just, the administration is just get busy on next year and moving and changing and additions and.
And I'll send you the minutes to that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Chaz.
With Ken Kelly's case with service disposition, the last month we met, there was, there was nothing to report to you because we were focusing in on budget, that wasn't, that was it. So we had nothing major happening. And at the zoning board meeting that I attended, the only action that was taken was a variance to approve, to put a walk-up window. Rita's Water Ice has relocated from the Black Horse Pike will be opening up. All comes Bridge Road and the building that they are leasing, they had to get a variance to approve, to put in a walk-up window for people to purchase the products. And that was approved. The only other thing I want to mention, that has nothing to do with the two meetings I attend, is the night after last month's board meeting, I attended the Camden Kelly Mayor's Association Program at Stone High School on the bill for legalizing marijuana. And I'm sure, as you know from reading the papers, watching the news, that bill was tabled by the Senator, President of the Senate, Sweeney. But I did do a brief breakdown of the entire presentation. And you had attorneys from their perspective, law enforcement, people, a doctor, he is a psychiatrist, and he, his perspective on the legalization of drugs. But I also pointed out the financial impact it has had on the states in the United States. We have about ten states in the United States that have legalized marijuana, one being Colorado. And I put in that report, which I was kind of amazed by, with the new businesses that it creates. In two thousand seventeen, eighteen, Colorado brought in an additional four-point-two billion dollars in revenues. That were taxable, that was in the tax money, but were taxable. Also, a statistic that came out from the police, the gentleman, the chief of police at the presentation, was that an average of thirty thousand arrests in the state of New Jersey are with people that have one ounce or less of marijuana in possession. The downside of that is it ties up our court system. The downside for that human being is that now it's a felony and many of them have, can never go into the military, could go to law enforcement, have obligated jobs, so. And I'm not one, I don't use drugs, I'm not one, I'm not in favor of something like this, but when I went to that meeting, it enlightened me in a different way, looking at both the pros and the cons. Who knows what's going to happen when it does come to a vote? But I know it will come to a vote sometime, probably in two months or two years. That's it.
Thank you. Negotiations, Angel's not here, but I just wanted to publicly thank the members of our team for their diligence and hard work, Naomi, Angel, Dennis, and Dan. I really appreciate all the, all the time you put in. You guys know I, I can't be here or I would have definitely tried to help out, but thank you very much. And on a side note, I was laughing, Dr. McCarron will tell you, I took the master school board member test, right, and I needed a certain amount, and I called Dr. McCarron flipping out because there was only like ten questions, maybe fifteen, and like six of them had to do with specific negotiation stuff. And that's something that in my tenure, I've never done. So I was like, huh, huh, and then I, so I was, I was literally panicking and I'm not, I don't, I don't remember ever having like that type of feeling over a test in a long, long time, but they don't, they didn't, like, it's not something that I normally think about. So I was taken aback, but I was, I, I made it, I made it our, now on top, but still. I just wanted to publicly thank you guys, so. Thanks, Dan. Any other, New Jersey School Board stuff?
I do have a few things. On May eighth is the Camden and Gloucester County Joint Meeting at Alito's Catering, May eighth, six to nine P M. They're going to recognize Camden County, Gloucester County Board members that have received their awards. And on May tenth is the Board of Directors Meeting in Trenton, which I will attend. I'm the alternate voting member, so Gail David from Sterling High School, I believe Sterling High School, she's the delegate, but I go along because I like to know what's going on. The Board of Directors are going to be voting on whether or not to make a donation for Sustainability New Jersey for Schools. And also, the other one will be the tuition reimbursements of those who are eligible to get higher education. May eighteenth is the Delegate Assembly, where it's every, every delegate from each county has a vote, and that will be May eighteenth from nine to noon. I don't have the materials yet as to what we're voting upon, but I will let you know as soon as I get them. Usually, it's the week before I get that agenda. And then June first is the County Association Leadership Meeting. I know April twenty-first was the deadline for anyone that wanted a leadership position in Camden County, the officers, they, it's president, vice president of the county, and then they have association representatives. I did not toss my name into the hat this time because of work, but it'll be interesting to see who was voted upon. I believe maybe at the Delegate Assembly, they do vote on those, those items, so. So that's all I have. And congratulations, passing your board.
Thanks, thanks, thanks. Naomi got the after text, like, I can't believe that just happened, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other? Okay, let's move on to new business then. Property transportation, I need a motion to approve items numbers one to five. However, the Student Council dance is on May seventeenth, not May twenty-fourth. That falls cool, I confirmed that with Mr. Peely today, so that change will be May seventeenth. Everything else looks good, so I just need a motion for one to five, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz. Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through eights. Motion made by Maria, seconded by Dan. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. Fans was here earlier, you heard her heartfelt feelings about, but we wish her the best. And there was also another longtime teacher, Mrs. Robin Clark, who also retired, so I wanted to publicly thank her for all of her years here in the North East School District.
Ms. Dan, sorry, just a couple, obviously, I'm hired, but I'm still in work right now, so I'm not going to recognize honors, but we'll get them here eventually. Also, sitting with Ms. Yessi is Ms. Christine Minsley. She's going to be our new nurse at Bingham School starting about twelve hours. Sorry that you. She's very excited to have Chrissy here. She's been working already with our school staff, so let her know who our position is. She's met those nurses, worked with them closely, worked with Ms. Yessi as well as the office staff at Bingham School to kind of get her acclimated to the process. We're excited that she can kind of get her feet wet in the district for the next two months. So starting in September, she's familiar with the process. We're very excited to have her, I think she'd be a great fit. So, welcome to the.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Sometimes I do come to the school nurses for my own personal.
Hit them now, hit them now.
I don't have a P C D, it's the school nurse.
Thanks again for coming tonight.
No problem, thank you.
Under finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through twenty-three. We're speaking on a long one through all this.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Chaz, seconded by Naomi. That's a long one.
We tried to get some of them.
It's been there all week though, so it's, it's fine. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Rilega.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samms.
Yes.
Ms. Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, under curriculum, I need a motion for numbers one and two, some students each in.
I make a motion for items one and two.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Be, uh, Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Rilega.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samms.
Yes.
Ms. Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
You know this same person, practical first hand, students each in second hand, remember what they were saying all about? We learned all about that last year. Um, that's, um, different in the education world now. Um, under policy and public relations, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Dennis.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Rilega.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samms.
Yes.
Ms. Balding.
Yes. Sorry, I said yes. I don't know anything about that.
The kids have, uh, Mr. Whipple, um, the last four or five years, um, that's kind of the.
Parents don't know.
That's what I was going to say.
It's not normally.
Yeah.
It's just somebody probably talks about it like all the time.
Um, usually sends the information.
Yeah, I don't know about yet, since in his class, so I'll, I'll text you and let you know what I know. I'm sure I'll, Samuel, you have.
We do do it, like a set, like a ten cross.
Yeah, yeah, he does.
I'm jealous.
Does anybody at this time have any public comment at all before we go into executive session? No? Okay. So we will be going into executive session. Uh, can I have a motion to go into open executive? Motion made by Patty, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
I have it. We will be taking action after executive session, if you want to stay. Whereas while the Senator Byron and Bay Area Public Meetings Act, N J S A ten colon four dash well, requires all meetings of the Runnymede School District Board of Education to be held in public, N J S A ten colon four dash well B sets forth nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted to attend. And whereas the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education has seen that necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the nine exceptions in the public meetings set forth in N J S A ten colon four dash well B listed below, and next to each exemption is a box within the number of the issues to be privately discussed that fall within that exemption shall be written. And after each exemption is a space where additional information that will disclose as much information about the decision as possible without undermining the purpose of the exemption shall be written. Now, therefore, may it resolve that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will go into closed session for the following reasons as outlined in N J S A ten colon four dash well B. Any collective bargaining agreement or the terms and conditions of which are proposed for inclusion in any collective bargaining agreement, including the negotiation of terms and conditions with employees or representatives of employees of the public body, more specifically the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education and the Runnymede Education Association. We will also be talking about any matter of having a purpose, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds, the setting of bank rates or investment of public funds where it could adversely affect the public interest if discussion of such matters were disclosed, more specifically, the agreement with the borough to lease borough offices for the school administration's use. And the latter side knows any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation in which the public body is or may become a party, any matters falling within attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order to the term, for the attorney to exercise his, or should say her, ethical duties as a lawyer, more specifically the nineteen twenty R F P architect, for the architect, the auditor, the solicitor, and the school physician. Whereas the length of the executive session is undetermined, however, the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will make every attempt to estimate the time of session prior to convening, and the session after which the public meeting shall reconvene at approximately eight thirty P M. And the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will proceed with business. Now, therefore, may it resolve that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will go into executive session for only the above stated reasons. Be it further resolved that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education hereby declares that a discussion of the aforementioned subjects may be made public at a time when the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education Attorney advises that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest, or duty of the school district or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education for the aforementioned reasons hereby declares that the public is excluded from the portion of the meeting during which the above discussions shall take place, and hereby directs the Board Secretary to take the appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the Board Secretary on the next business day following this meeting shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any member of the public who requests one at the fees allowed by N J S A forty-seven colon one A. Action on any item will take place in open session at the conclusion of this executive session. Thank you. We came back in, um, obviously, just about thirty seconds ago. Um, before we go into the after-executive session, I just want to remind all the board members that your C S A evaluation was due today. If you did not do it, would you please do it in the next two days?